You've got mail.
About six o'clock to be rise for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for standing.
Well, but American way to say it.
That's exactly right.
Thanks for notes.
Okay, Mr. O'Keefe. Go ahead and you've got about five minutes. Have you filled out a complaint form?
I think Officer Randy, sorry, I'm a little.
Okay.
I don't think he bought the property on my share. And these pictures show that some of his property on Jeff is on the city block. And now it goes through with Thomas Clack.
Well, can we see your pictures to help me get it oriented here? With all that effort, will you at least look at them?
These are the city on the ones. As the power line goes through there.
This is Randy.
He's on his way. He was parked at the intersection of 36th and.
Is it one of the ones?
It's been cited, yeah. We just have to go through the process.
If he has sided it, there's a process and unfortunately it's not instant, but it will be addressed. He'll be asked to fix the situation or he'll be taken to court and fined.
Usually what happens with these type of things is we'll give them an initial period of time to fix the property. If they don't do that, we'll cite him with an ordinance violation. We'll go to court and we can seek to have the judge order them to fix it or potentially find them. And so that has a little bit of a process to it.
He took it to court before he wouldn't pay for trees. We had a son and he was paid for the tree. But that was only part of the problem to keep our house from being hit by the storm. But these trees are just getting bigger. Why do you not have to pay for our property? Our lines go through each day.
Which he could take them to several courts.
You could sue him personally for damages to your property, but what we're gonna do is we gave him a list of things we want to have fixed under our ordinance and they get 30 days to fix those. If they don't fix them in 30 days, we can take them to court. We can fine them up to $2,500. So that's the process we're in right now.
I saw a tree of everything over there last week. They took down about two trees and they left.
Okay. Well, they gotta fix everything we gave them. It's not enough to just fix one or two things. But before we go to court, Randy will look at, Officer Neil and they'll look at it and see if they fixed everything to his liking or not.
Do they, are they still living there?
Do you know what the neighbor's name is?
Paul Cruz.
Okay. I recognize the address. I just didn't remember a name. Okay.
Yeah.
This is the stuff in the lawn, which our guys, Jeff, should our guys take down the stuff in the power line?
We need to look what's in our right way. I see you have some right way pictures there.
Where's this at?
Machin Street. They've already been cited, so I.
They spoke to have a tree trimmer come.
He said that somebody came and trimmed two trees, but then left. It's what the neighbor said, but I don't know. Haven't been by there.
I explained to your wife, Peter, that it was cited before the last meeting, okay? So there's a process and it goes through before it gets to the court. He has had an opportunity to clean up that property, but it's not finished yet. Is your name also on the deed with your wife's fur down here, 1010?
No.
Maple?
No.
Neither one? Okay. Cause I talked to her about getting those properties cleaned up too.
That's heavy on that 1010. I never got the shoe too old or I don't know.
So it is on our, in our sites and we are working on it. It just doesn't happen overnight. Thank you. Dr. Walts, welcome.
Hey Jeff, can I have this?
Yes.
Pass them that way, that way. Thanks for, I'm here on behalf of the Stormwater Drainage Board tonight. The information that I'm presenting to you, you did see back in November last year, it goes to lower heat gas into a basin. And the Stormwater Drainage Board's hopes to eventually help mediate the drainage issues that are there. Essentially, there are various stages of things that need to be done to get that taken care of. Keep the vibe of the project up in various stages and do it over a period of time. The other thing we just simply need to do is do the entire project and get the area taken care of. Through the Community Crossings Grant, that provides an opportunity to get that done. If we do it solely on Stormwater Drainage funds, it could be 2020 before we could get the thing taken care of. So fortunately, one stage is already done. That was done at the time of the Howard Avenue project. Each stage is going to go down or each additional major component helps further. The next step would be the Viva Street 48-inch outlet pipe. But again, with the funds that we have, it could be 2026 before we even start that. With Community Crossings Grants, I know you're a long way along and a lot of times are changing and all that, but we wanted to communicate with the board. But if we, if the board would agree that, look, let's do this as a Community Crossings project and start to get it in the queue for Community Crossings. The Stormwater Board, we put, you know, their funds, which they could come up with funds to cover the engineering to get this whole thing designed. And the town would match those. That would be enough to qualify for the 7525 Stormwater, you know, Community Crossings Grant. And it'll allow the, you know, the stormwater issues to be significantly improved. That area does have some problems with the sanitary sewers. This wouldn't solve that. But by having less water in the storm sewers, it makes the sanitary sewer problems less frequent and less critical. But again, that, it doesn't address the sanitary sewers. So what the Stormwater Board would like would be an agreement from the town and acknowledgement that, yes, we would, we want to cooperate with the Community Crossings Grant and Stormwater go ahead and get the project, you know, start the design so we can apply for the grant. And if it was received, then the town would come up with, you know, the matching funds to complete the work with the Community Crossings. You know, there's no point in paying all that till you get the underlying drainage issues taken care of. But once you get the drainage issues, the roads are gonna be amassed and you may need to have them fixed anyway. So it just makes sense that you do the roads and the drainage, the sidewalks and ditches and gutters and all that at the same time. So that's what it is. So the board would like kind of to know your wishes and thoughts.
Somebody jump in.
Well, you're using your, how do you get your cash flow and your timeline? So you just taking?
Based on time. What's left is our discretion. I mean, after we pay for the debt, which is the obligation and some other things, we end up with, you know, 40,000 to 60,000 a year that we can put for projects. So we would channel that money to take care of this so we could get it.
Right.
Designed. Otherwise, we have to save that up over years. I mean, you could, you can always borrow a lot of money again and have another big debt payment and all that, but.
What we have.
Our approach has always been to save. You know, our approach with this board has been to save and everything.
Right, right. I don't remember when the debt's paid off, the current Stormwater debt. Has that paid off in?
Not for a while.
Well, I think about in 15 years. Was it 20 or 15 years? That's about $60 a year. Well, obviously, we can get some match on it, you know, 75, 75% if that's the best way to try to leverage our little money we have. But then I don't think the Community Crossings, Jeff, have you seen anything recent on there?
It came out today that they are going to have a second call for this year, which will open up September 23rd, I think. And will close on October 28th. And so we will be able to apply for that. My thought was to go ahead and apply for Anderson and Erie to get those repaid. But they will have another call in early January if you want to consider it a project.
Well, Erie I can see makes sense. Anderson, I don't know. I mean, it, we won't do anything about paid out there. We do that.
It is in pretty rough shape.
Oh, it's horrible. I know. But you know, I guess that's where we need to get back to our long-term planning. Are we, are we going to try to do any more of that? Spend our money or whatever you call it that we did in the market hour? Cause we are, I don't know, if it's still available, I don't know.
There's federal dollars out there. I looked into trying to do Anderson and Erie just as a backup in case they did not do the Community Crossings this year. And to do that, I'd have to change the status of those two roads to collectors.
Well, if Erie's done, I believe, Anderson would be. But still, we're looking at a very long timeline. You know, Anderson, I don't think either street will make it very much longer. I mean, that's reality of it.
Well, those are a couple of my properties. Anderson is number one, or I'm sorry, Erie is number one on my books. And I know we kind of purposely waited until we got some of the sewer repair work done here and there before we did.
Right. Well, back to the wastewater, or stormwater. So it sounds like right now we intend to apply for the two streets Jeff has spoken of.
Maybe do it in January.
Well, that would give you time to do your engineering feasibility studies and that kind of stuff that we wanted to pursue by then.
This has been, these have been on the books for years, since 2012, as I know back and probably further.
And I think, I mean, I think the Howard project did help them. I don't see as much overflow. I mean, it's not, it's not, underneath is not better. It needs attention, but at least it's not flooding as much as it did.
Yeah, with the, with the project and the modeling that was done, the time, it predicted some improvement and it's actually been a little better than was predicted, but it still doesn't solve.
Right.
The problems, but it was a help and everything helps just a little more.
Well, we need to be fixing stuff whenever we can, I guess, bottom line. He can throw a rock and hit a project in any direction. You know, we have another board, Stormwater Board saying, hey, you know, here's a project for us. So I don't know, you say January, you said June?
They should have another call at the beginning of the year. They generally do it twice a year.
Now, what do we need to get prepared for that, I guess?
Just the application. Now with, what I'm doing currently, it's just a mill and resurface. So it's pretty straightforward.
Cause you kind of had it almost ready to go when they.
Yeah.
Put a stop to it.
I've got all the resources I need to do that in-house. So it'll just be a matter of plugging, plugging in numbers for this.
Well, some of these streets, you're wanting, you think we can get sidewalks in Community Crossings?
If you do a major rehabilitation, which includes milling surface and when you're doing the drainage underneath. And again, when you look where the water is standing and where the roads are on hold and broken out, I mean, they corralate. So we should be able to, I mean, that's part of why you want to have a good, you know, let's say, let's just please do this. You want to have the backing with the analysis, some graphs and photographs. And again, if you get the engineering, you know, started, it should qualify by the rules unless they change them significantly.
How many, how many applications can the town have, just one, per cycle?
Yeah.
I think you can, you can have two ongoing projects at the same time, but you can't have a third. And that's what we ran into last year.
That's why we didn't do it longer.
Still off the books. They didn't get it closed out until.
How long's the grant cycle?
Six months, I think.
It's six months in between calls.
Between calls, but the cycle, you mean when you close it out?
How long do you have to complete the process?
Randy, do you recall?
The one on Howard was closed out last year, so I don't know when that project actually started again. But.
Howard gives to Community Crossings.
No.
When you say we had two projects, Jeff, do you mean we had other?
Two, two Community Crossings.
We had two Community Crossings at the same time. That's right. That's right. Just like Oker Green. But Oker doesn't count towards a Community Crossing. Okay. It's probably over 18 months. 18 months, I think.
How does that sounds about, really?
Typically, most of them are 18, I think. So, well, I guess the question is, well, how much? This, when the application, Jeff, we would have to submit more detail due to just beyond resurface.
Well, yeah, for the, what Doc Walts is proposing, have it pretty sizable submission.
But, well, once we do the work, we have it. And we just don't want to lose it.
Part of the reason we took it out, where the Stormwater Drainage Board would give the engineering portion is because you need a significant jump up front. And you don't got 20 other things to spend your money on, so you don't, you don't want to do that other part later. And so the other part comes in time that you're actually ready to mill and resurface and actually get the thing done. So there's, it gives you more time to throw it in your queue of larger extra funds.
Do you have an extra copy of what? Can I make a copy of it? I can make a copy of it for you.
Okay. In case I have questions about.
I'm wondering if we can apply for two of them at the same time? If that's the case, if we can apply for this and go ahead and apply for Erie, since we really need to do Erie Street, we can apply for both of them?
There's gonna be some legal work on Anderson to be able to apply for it, cause it's not been dedicated in a way that you can apply for it yet.
Well, I've had a lot of questions about Erie Street, so I guess.
I think they already did that on Erie before I even became.
Is it ready or not?
Yeah, I think it's ready. I don't think Anderson is, though. I think we have to do some things on Anderson.
Erie's been reclassified.
Yeah, but you're talking about legal right away, cause it's outside the city limits on the north side.
We have some problems on Anderson to address, yeah.
So we're reasonable and everything.
I don't think it's gonna be ready as far as from a legal standpoint. But Erie should be fine to go for it.
That's the biggest issue. I mean, I don't know anything about Anderson necessarily as far as that. I think that I've just had several issues with Erie Street that I need to know, so.
Like Park was saying, that city limits or town limits are straddling Anderson for most part. That becomes an issue.
Well, okay. Anyway, it goes back to, do we, I mean.
I think, you know, one of the board, I mean, we just, we want to, we don't want to.
You don't want to pay for engineering?
We don't want to pay for engineering. It's gonna be five years down the road, then it loses some validity. So I mean, whether it's, it's highly likely that we could have it ready for a September, an October call. But we could be prepared for a January call and somewhere in 2021, you know, it could be submitted, whether it be a January call or an August call. But it's, we get the process going and we did, you know.
I would say that, that's the direction we're, we're looking at.
Since it's got two separate boards, if we had sort of a motion that said we, we want to cooperate or whatever with the Stormwater Council, as the engineering's developed and we would cooperate on it, applying for Community Crossings in the near future. What that means.
Yeah, doesn't mean we get it, but.
Doesn't mean we get it, or whether the foreseeable future is January or May at all.
Right.
We just don't want to be.
Yeah, I'll move on then.
Sir, second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll relate that to Stormwater Board.
All right.
So, so, okay, while you're still here, the ditch behind Goggins? Yeah, we want to, it says Stormwater had representation here. We want to talk.
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Goggins out there last week when I was on site. He has on the north end of the football field, there's a ditch that runs for Joe's, well, for 41 underneath Joe's. And across the backside of those properties, which riprap behind Mr. Goggins' house. And there are two tiles. One of them is a pretty good sized concrete tile and there was another about 16 inches.
Where's it at?
12 inch, laying right next to it.
Are both them plastic?
The smaller one's black plastic. And the other one's pretty big concrete.
Yeah, I'm going to wear a watch, the 36 inch concrete pipe. I didn't see the black plastic.
Yeah, it's laying off to the right of them, just right there. And anyway, the story I got from the guys, and I don't know how accurate it is, but they said that Indoc came in and you put that in across there from 41 through Stormwater, run down to that ditch. Now, Mr. Goggins' suggestion was it'd make life a lot easier on him to go ahead and put concrete, a big old pipe all the way down to the gully there behind Dave Niblens. Well, that's about a 50 yard stretch at least. And I told him, I said, that'd be a pretty good sized project.
Right.
But he'd like to at least fill the end level and off. That way there'd be maintenance free.
Well, yeah, I actually go over there and then the neighbors came out, of course, they see somebody out back there. So I got to meet the neighbors. Uh, yeah, it takes, it'd be a lot of money to do that. To me, uh, yeah. As far as spraying, we could spray it, which would crossbow and I'd definitely kill about anything growing in there. But there's still going to be an open ditch. It's new, is that the guy that's east of Goggins?
Yes.
Okay, the old barber. Yeah. He cut my hair. It's about that tall. But yeah, behind his house, it's starting, actually a dam is starting to build up there, it looks like.
Yeah, he's got some limbs and breathing to gather down through there.
But I, I don't, we don't have budget to do much right there.
That's all that I did is I did out there, which is not that, at least some of the tall stuff down.
We have a sprayer for the gator.
Yeah, and we can go in, we can spray.
Do we still have crossbow? They used to have crossbow. What you do, you get a ground, ground down a crossbow, mix it, you know, this stuff, just break and clear. Woody, it's a Woody brush, though.
Is it legal?
Yeah, it's legal.
Who owns the property? Is it on us or is it just? I'm assuming that we have a right of way through there since we got riprap and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, obviously.
Is it an amusement type thing or?
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, that's what I recommend, Jeff, just try to get all the vegetation we can, cause that's about the cheapest, you know, really, thing we can do right now.
And that ditch has been there for years.
Oh, oh, yeah, it's been there since.
How long has he lived there?
Not that long, a couple of years.
So you put there, Steve?
Well, the maintenance with being sure that the vegetation's out of the way so it's not blocking stuff out. We get the standing water, it needs to be done in a quarter of the time to finish it now. That quarter needs to be done. That's been an open dish since the 60s to play with. It's always been an open dish. To fill it in, because that pipe takes, that feeds into it, that comes down Burke Street. It becomes a little Burke Street, but it takes a tremendous amount of water from the 41 corridor. And so they put in pipe partway under, was, was part of it's been closed over. Then after that, it's just open discharge. And it would take a very large pipe to handle all that. And to go back to, it would be another major.
It'd be a big project.
Thing. I mean, you know, you're looking at 48 inch, you're looking at, it's probably going to be bigger than the Viva Street in 2000. So you're looking at a big deal to make that, to smooth that out. So it's, it would be down the middle block.
It was probably there when he moved in, so.
But the ditch, it has all the ditches that are automatically maintained and it sounds like.
These look love.
So that's, is that the town's property, that ditch?
It's a right of way.
We have a right of way?
We have utilities running down through there, a pole anyway. We're draining the town water down through there, so I would say.
Could it be on the high school?
Well, that's why I'm asking.
That's what the map.
Are you, are you one to do some research for us?
I can, but I mean, you don't want to be investing infrastructure money into property you don't necessarily own.
No, but weed killer. I mean, we don't want.
Weed killer's fine.
Okay, but it's legal.
As long as you have the property, you don't have a submission. You might want to run it past the school first.
Well, it's a school's property.
Right. As I say, you may want to run it past the school if you're gonna spray it or ask them to spray.
From a drainage standpoint, it seems like a short-term fix would be to get out whatever vegetation we can. As long as the property owners are okay with it, we can do that. If not, then.
And start hanging.
We would have to defer to returning, what we can do, but if they're all agreeable with us.
Yeah.
It's better to get rid of the problem than to argue about.
Just get down some initial.
Oh, you have actually a call.
I'd just say we need to have permission before we start altering things from a liability standpoint.
Own liability.
I can leave. Do whatever you want.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sean Burford wasn't attending, wasn't paying on attending. He just, I just told him I would present that information. I think he's already reached out to the health department. They aren't gonna have, you know, maximum people or anything like that. So they're not asking for anything other than just.
A car show down at the park.
A benefit thing, so.
Turn on my M1, turn on the big. Or so they can tell me.
He was just doing right by his part by asking.
Due diligence, doing a good diligence, yes. Remember that, counsel, due diligence.
You can't read and print it sometimes.
Were you asking?
Nothing. Park mentioned due diligence.
Yeah, toss around terms over here.
So I have a couple of things. I received a complaint from our building inspector, building commissioner, and Mr. Soals as to somebody building a fence without a permit.
Did I violate them when I did it, bro?
Different, different issue apart. But apparently this individual and Mr. Soals is investigating and found that they didn't, in fact, did not have a building permit for the fence. So we have the ability to fine them up to $350 and impose whatever the permit fee normally would be.
Well, is there, I can understand the fee, but.
Is that his request?
Well, that's just what we're allowed to do. I guess the fence has actually been built on the neighboring property.
That would be a problem.
With no permit, so.
What's the neighbor say?
Well, the neighbor's here, I believe.
Where's the neighbor?
I don't know. Maybe not.
Where's this kid's at?
410 West High Street. I thought they were gonna be here, but. So it's 408 and 410 West High Street are the two properties in question, but.
Well, it seems, it sounds like it needs to be moved.
408.
Is that on the north or the south side? North. So it's gotta be three houses this way. Is it Welch's house or?
So one neighbor's April Benelmo. I don't know who actually constructed.
Does April live in Welch's?
They may. 408 West High is where she lives.
That, that would be where the bed and breakfast is.
Yeah, Magdola.
And then 410 is the offending property.
Cause big blue house is 416.
14 built on 411?
408's property is what.
Was it done privately? Did they hire a company?
I don't know. I don't know that.
I'm happy with them.
Well, they build a fence on their property, so.
So 410 built on 408?
Yes.
So 410, they moved here. They were out of town. They moved here.
Oh, Janet and Thomas Miller. Janet, Eric.
But from our perspective, there, we can impose a fine and we can ask for the permit.
I think their fine's going to be that they have to have the fence moved.
Yeah, so, yeah, what about, is that how the complaint came up, the other owners, or were they?
They complained, Josh went out and investigated.
Whatever happened to knocking on your neighbor's door?
Or survey?
Of course, yeah, they got him.
So I guess what I'm looking for is permission to proceed with the complaint on behalf of the town.
You have permission?
Yeah, permission, I don't think we should fine them, I think they're going to pay a cost to move the fence, but we could make them pay for the permit.
We need to get a permit, they move it.
Hey Jeff, when you start doing the articles again, maybe, I think that would be an informative about when people need permits and when they don't.
Yeah, I'm planning on doing one on rightways, Eastlands, who does what, and that kind of thing.
Alterations of structures would apply also, it says.
I just did a rough.
Did you alter the leather roof?
Yes, you did.
How much is that fine? Do you have your checkbook with you?
Hey, I saved an old structure, what, what do you want?
It does look nice.
Well, thank you.
So I'll have to look at our ordinance and see if we have the ability to make them move the fence or not, that may be a civil issue between the two property.
Seriously, altercation, I mean, how, how do you define that?
Hum? Alteration.
Alteration, I mean.
Do you really want to go down the rabbit hole?
Well, no, I guess, no, I don't know, I'm just curious.
Alter means change.
Well, I.
Did you change the structure in any room?
No, it's still the same footprint.
Did you alter it?
So it's the.
Why do you define that? I mean, that's how.
I consider alter change, if your roof was brown and now it's red, that's an alteration.
No, that's not. No. No, no.
I'm a strict interpreter.
I wouldn't think so.
Most likely, but that's.
The taxes, that's a lot getting better than you.
Is that all you had, or I'm going to start complaining about the fact that you need a permit for a fence, but when you completely tear a house down to the studs and redo it all, you don't, because that's a remodel.
Well, that's kind of, yeah, I mean, I understand that, yeah, you need.
But that's not our ordinance.
No, that's not, no, you can, you can tear a house down practically, but.
I thought we were going to address that, I mean, I've heard that before.
Yeah, so what else do you have there?
Anyway, so it's the board's preference that the permit fee be paid, but not necessarily the fine be issued.
Just move the fence, yes.
And request that the fence be moved to the property.
The fence has to be a 10 inch of property line.
Or.
By ordinance.
That's the other property.
Oh yeah, that was the ordinance I was going to look at, so we could cite him under the zoning ordinance as far as that and ask him to move the fence.
I thought, is it a different fence? Because there was a fence, the backyard was fenced before.
I have not been out there to look at this, I just received this when I got here.
I thought the fence was put in by the previous.
Yeah, me.
Damn.
I didn't go out and look at it.
Alright.
But this was in my box when I got here today, so, um, a couple of updates, we proceeded forward with debt collections now that the state is allowing shut offs and things of that nature, so we have some more court dates on our outstanding debt collections. Also pending ordinance violations, we've had some where we've had some trouble with service, so we've been chasing them around, trying to get service on a few of these individuals. But we're proceeding forward on the ordinance violations we have pending also, um, which is, one of them was the McKeen Street address that came in today, was one of the newer ones. I had one other thing, I'm forgetting what it was now, where's that list? We have an ordinance concerning tax abatement procedures, this just allows the Park County Redevelopment Commission to serve as an initial intake for people requesting tax abatements for developments within the town. And what they would do is they'd take all the information, they'd review it, make a recommendation to the town council, and then you guys would still have final approval on any tax abatements. So that's something we've talked about previously.
They're ready to go?
It's ready, if you guys are ready to vote on it.
I move.
Do you need same day?
You need unanimous consent, same day, same year.
We're moving for both, is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you working on Anderson, by the way, are you working on that?
I haven't, but I, I remember Jeff had sent an email to me, but I haven't started sitting.
It wasn't involved, I mean, it's just, it's half city, half town, I mean.
I gotta pull all the, the.
It sounds complicated.
The mapping on it, yes.
I didn't, sorry, that didn't turn on. It's not printing.
It's okay. So you'll want to sign the first section just once and then you gotta flip it and sign the second section on whether you approve or disapprove of the ordinance. Anderson has to be reclassified, but we also have to look at what parts within our town limits and what part is not within our town limits, which I'll have to go and do some research at the courthouse.
Thanks.
Well, the part that's not in the town limit, we can't use town money, we cannot use town money to do that.
Right, so then you might be looking at annexation possibly.
So you could only pay half of it?
We could do half the street, we could do, we could do it, do it going east, but going, going west will be a burden.
My hope is when I look into it, it's not going to be down the middle of Anderson Street, that it's going to be.
Like the bank is in town, and I think the dollar store is in town.
Well, the apartments are.
And none of the residents.
But none of the residents are.
On the north side.
I'm just going to have to look at the map on it and see where we're at on that, but I would assume that the street's either all the way in or all the way out, and hopefully it's all the way in. It might become an issue with sidewalks or drainage though.
So do those people have the ability to vote?
No.
Which might influence where you place sidewalks if you want to do that.
I was thinking that she's on that town.
You can only put them where you own, so, um, as far as, we had another project with the sewer project going north on 41, that property didn't sell at auction, we're awaiting our second appraisal, so we might be able to pursue forward with that.
Okay.
But I did talk with them and they're ready to go as soon as we're ready to go.
Did you say you made contact with the second part?
Right. We just need the appraisal back.
Okay. We do.
The, the 41 North. So it didn't sell, so we're able to proceed forward with what we're hoping to do.
And then how about?
The other property, um, is going through.
Thank you.
The state is doing a phase one study on it to make sure there's no environmental hazards. If that comes back clean, they've accepted our offer, we're ready to proceed on that.
How about, that's what I, that's the one I meant, had you made contact with the other property?
No, I, I'm not certain how I'm going to do that.
Ride with the police?
I guess, maybe, I don't know. That, that's the, the other property, I haven't talked to him yet.
And we have one appraisal on there?
Right. So if anybody comes up with a good contact number for him.
I can give one.
Can you?
I should be able to, yeah, he's just a, yeah, anyway.
Okay, I mean, if you use one, shoot me a number that works.
I should be, his, uh.
Oh yeah, he doesn't have the cell phone.
Granddaughter works out at the bank.
Okay.
I see her every day.
I occasionally run into him, but, um.
About every afternoon.
You do?
Well, he goes and comes over there every afternoon.
Oh, I didn't do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is one of your banders?
No, no, I see, when I'm at the mall, I see.
He stake out the property.
Yeah, I got him staked out, I have binoculars, I keep an eye on everything with him. Yeah.
Okay.
What do you want to know?
Well, he's going to tell you to have me call the office, but that's not going to work, so I need a different number besides that phone number.
Okay.
He doesn't have a cell number.
He's got to have some other way to be contacted besides the office phone number.
He has a home number.
He gets pizzas, I'll put something in the box.
He does, he just.
Occasionally.
Calling the office isn't really a good option, I guess is what I'd suggest, so if he can give us some other way to get ahold of him.
I can get you that cell phone number.
Okay, that'd be great.
Are you going to do it, Brady?
Yeah.
Oh, thanks.
That's all I have, unless I'm forgetting something.
No, I'll wire it in or later if you think of something. Okay, you, Randy.
Hi, um, we've got minutes for August 10th, August 24th, the August 31st, and September 8th, if there's any questions, if there's not, they all need signatures, and I think.
Make them all, does anybody have questions?
Last one, you take a foot gander at them.
Why didn't you read them before the meeting?
I sent them to you. This is the one that Dave will not sign, just.
Well, I wasn't the eighth one, so this is the August 10th.
Did I put you on there?
Yeah.
No, we're, that's passed, we're up to August 10th, 24th or 31st.
Okay, that's the August 10th one.
And I'll mark you out if I.
Tending Parks Caruso, I'm making a motion to prove it to you.
Okay, that was the 24th, that's permission to our, somebody.
Is there a second?
Hold on, hold on.
Read faster. I mean, I know I waited till afternoon, but.
Okay, then the third first, we have, what we do, I was, I was at that one too?
No.
Oh, I wish he, yeah, I was the eighth, I wasn't, that's my birthday.
That's ever, everyone already has that.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, okay, so with that one, we have, now, you made a motion.
I do, is there a second?
You just read them.
Uh, yeah, second.
All in favor?
I guess I should sign it.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, claims, there's two sets of claims ended the month for a $484,006.41. We'll have a mid-September, this will be our meeting today, for $234,052.06, and you should have those copies in your mailboxes as well.
Got questions on those?
There's those if.
Well, uh, I went through them, I, 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 uh, where they are, yeah, they are. Uh, one of them is pretty much payroll, so, lots of sewer stuff in there though, boy, that's.
Oh boy.
Makes your eyes pop out when you see it.
And Troy's back again. Speaking of money.
So, uh, saw you, boy, fuel budget, where's Randy, right, Randy? September 9th, paid $1,584. Your fuel for, I just, are you, are you watching your fuel there?
They're submitted every month, those, again, pretty regularly.
Okay. Made our bomb payment.
I would have thought they should have been less since the gas prices.
So you guys bought a bunch of ammunition, just replenishing?
Yeah. Hard to get right now.
Oh, tell me about it, yeah, good luck. Oh, and the other one, that's where all that sewer stuff was, good lord. I saw we got to build, 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 uh, build Brown Station work, somebody, didn't we?
Probably D C.
Whatever, did we have to remediate anything with, oh?
Yeah, we could have cleared that.
I can't even find it now, I saw it somewhere in here. We got him cleaned up, right?
Yeah.
Till next night.
Yeah, good. So we used some casino money to cover some of the deck engineering on the O'Reilly thing.
Yeah, we didn't use that money last year, so beans that you can use it on anything, on how to light it, so that we would.
Did the board approve that?
Well, we're getting ready to. Need necessarily a, yeah, I mean, within, unless you want to use it somewhere else, but last year, like I said, it looks like it's set there before and not been utilized, so.
Well, right, what we've been doing is accumulating that, part of that needs to go to South Market. I mean, I think we'll be fine on South Market, but, yeah, we should talk about those things. Well, that's another thing, we need to talk about, future use of money in projects. Yeah, okay, I, I move to approve.
For a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
William Desmond's 228806, there's been actually kind of, quite a few just leak adjustments, people are submitting documentation along with their, you know, providing they have something from, we just got a bill today for somebody that had this $2,200 bill from Beverly's to repair their leak, but I think these are mainly leak adjustments, I think they'll.
Through the pool. We should probably keep some of these as proof of why we need our water project.
Well, and we've got, I mean, we have all of, you know, everything stays in the meeting folder, so we can always fill those.
That's good evidence to see.
I move to approve leak, leak adjustment.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Kind of got for the year revised ordinance for the salary ordinance, and that's amendments. Dates back to January for a police officer hire, August a fireman full time. There's a couple of July raises that were implemented by the board, and then August wastewater labor hire, so I have those and I've got those attached on the second sheet. I've just updated the, um, ordinances within there, if there's any questions or concerns.
Can you make us a copy of this, or at least make a copy?
I can, yep.
So I can make sure I got, update later.
Yeah, I can copy that, but all of that stuff will be in the minutes too, with those salary that you guys approved. Okay, that would be that one.
Have you ever done moves in the past?
I don't mind.
Moved to prove.
Probably put treasure listed.
Second, well, good.
Second.
All in favor?
I appreciate it.
Hello, be happy to help if you need this.
Um, and the only other thing I have is the, um, have a hearing notice for the 2021 budget, how much adoption meeting is set for October 12th, so if there are no other.
Is that Columbus Day?
Do we celebrate that?
We're not supposed to, I think now, but.
I don't know.
October 12th is Columbus Day.
I get the day off, is all I know.
It is, you have that day off.
Till somebody decides we can. It was bad too.
No, it was on our sheet and it's on my regular meeting schedule.
Do we want to go ahead and meet in?
That was approved as well, I, either way, I don't care, I can change it to 12. Don't know. I can probably move it to Tuesday, but.
I'm working that day, so I'm, I'm working that day meeting.
I'll probably be done celebrating by six.
I'll never get a day off.
Well, that's our town Rockville meeting scheduled there, no, it's not.
It's our normal, yeah, and it was advertised that way as to, it was approved at the beginning of the year, so.
Well, let's do it, that was just really upsetting.
So you guys are fine with keeping it?
Sure.
I guess I need to pass this claim to you, sit here and just.
Does anybody have old business? Is that all you have?
Yeah, I, other than, if any, I mean, I think you guys have already discussed that budget and there was anything else provided, so, um, I've got a list of changes that I'll present to you in the October, you know, removing the money and all that stuff.
Where, where are we at on that?
And get it changed.
You were concerned last meeting about what bill you're paying, but we're not paying a bill until we accumulate the money and do the project and get the bills, I mean, all we're doing is accumulating.
I'm just going to put together a list for you guys that requested have been made and you approve them, put them in the meeting, print them for the money, and there I've got my documentation that you approved and transferred.
Okay.
So, that's how we'll.
Okay, can you see that out beforehand, so we can kind of review it and see what we agreed to do? Well, yeah, maybe.
We're up to old business, does any, I said, does anybody have old business?
I just had mine.
About new business. I suppose this isn't really sort of for the town, but there should be a testing, COVID testing site opening approximately the first of October. It'll be a drive up and it will.
In Rockville?
Yes, it will operate out of, sort of out of the.
Valley?
Community center. Um, but they'll drive up and get swabbed.
Okay.
So Lamont, how many times you can do that?
No.
So they have a.
And there's no charge.
Now, wait a minute, what type of tests are they doing, saliva or nasal?
Nasal.
Oh, that's not.
It's a different one now, it's just a, an swab of the nerve.
They'll go all the way up there anymore?
No.
Okay.
But they are going to do children.
Huh?
Kind of had an itch up there.
Sure, there's one named, coming out of, is it parking?
The, the hope is, we're still finalizing and we're in that hiring process right now. The plan is to have them pull around to the back where it's handicap accessible and the swabber will just go out the door and swab them. And then the people will be in doing the testing.
That's a purpose, I mean, just, more tests available, so less use.
That, yes.
I mean, the more tests you do, the more positive it's going to get. I mean, the numbers keep going up, well, duh, you're testing more. It's so silly.
People are also going to more events and masking less.
Well, I guess so, but anyway.
We see bumps after holidays. We're waiting to see if we see a bump after Labor Day.
It's, well.
But we're in the blue. We're okay.
I won't get on my foot. It'll stand.
Good idea.
I'm being filmed.
But, I mean, it's a good thing to have because the schools, you know, they've got folks coming in and out all the time, and a lot of places require a negative test before you.
I'm just shocked that a small town like us.
They're wanting, the state wants one in every county. They're really pushing hard.
So this is the hundred thousand dollar grant?
Okay.
So how much is it's going to B H, B H C or whatever?
None, unless some of their employees apply.
We're not paying a fee to the town for the building use?
Hopefully, there will be, there should be a stipend left, and we will pay, try to get an average of what the utility bill runs, and then whatever is in excess will pay. That will be paid.
Who runs it? Who staffs it?
Well.
You?
Sort of. Not, no. Actually, they will apply through the Union Hospital website. They will be Union employees, and Union will cover all taxes, ICA and all that, and then they will invoice the county, and we will pay out of the grant.
All right.
The hope, well, what they plan right now is to run it through June thirtieth of next year, but they're also telling us they're starting to push out information on vaccine clinics, so they think the vaccine will be coming here shortly.
What should we do? We could always go donate blood and find out.
Automatize.
That's if you have.
They won't take my blood, you can't. So, that's all I have. See anybody? Oh, Troy? Oh, you just came to visit? Well, welcome.
Who's he going to lay back here? Are you putting Tony in here?
Hi, no, I'm with the Park County Set in London, because CNI covered thirty-six, so I'm President Wood Myers, and so I just showed up today.
Good. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff.
Indoc kicked back to us on the handicap parking spot at the BFW. I know we talked about that before, and just wanted to get your approval to go ahead and take.
They're okay with it?
Yeah.
Good deal.
They kicked it back to us, said, sure.
Is it going to be the one right on the?
Yeah, right there by the alley. If that's okay with you guys, we can get that done for them. Our new employee asked me questions, or asked me a question about residencies, thinking about living in Rosedale. I didn't think that there's an issue. I know there's stuff that they've looked about that.
No, we've got a lot of people that don't live in town.
We already talked about pit crossings, sinkholes been repaired, water project, a little bit of preliminary good news on the water project. Roger will have his preliminaries here and done. One thing to keep in mind is, he kind of thinks from the initial results that our pump house really is not in too bad a shape.
Well, all right.
As far as the pipes and the infrastructure, that kind of stuff. Now, we do know we need a new status system. The filter media, surprisingly enough, is in pretty good shape, and been several, any signs of wear, according to the guy that inspected it, he was surprised as we worked as well. So one of the things Roger suggested is maybe to get a list of a lot of the valves we know we need to replace as, as kind of a big-ticket item, and so Cody's going to try to, Indoc did walk around and be on that, so we have some good suggestions for the grant. Well, number four is complete. The bill for that ended up being fifty-three oh five, fifty-three hundred, five thousand three hundred and five dollars, some odd cents, which was a heck lot better than the last one that we did. So I think we approved that, but well, number four leaking in previous, but I just wanted to know pictures of what it turns out. So really, our well heads are in pretty good shape.
Yeah, so we did the flow test on all those as well. I don't have a date on that, but I do know well, six was still performing very well, which is good. It's going to here. But that, you see it when I hit there, when I hit the jet.
I knew it. I just knew it.
But that, that is the repair length, so that's the quote. I'd like to go ahead and get that, get that repaired. Yeah, we should, we should be good now.
Park, are you looking for money?
Well, yeah, I was. I am.
I thought that was the bill.
Well, you know, October to December, three months left. We should have twenty-five percent left in every fund. Water's down to eighteen as of this day. Twenty-one point seven five. Oh, it's better than that. So we're not a disaster there, but.
We could do this, but don't have anything else go wrong till after the.
You know, we, we, we have some funds that are over, some that are under force. The heck is that one?
So is that a motion?
Well, yeah, we have to fix it. I move.
What pump is that?
Uh, four.
Well, number four.
No, materials and supplies has twenty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-one. Of course, like I said, there's some other accounts that are, you know, at the end of the year, you kind of take them where you, you know how that one. So we do have money in terms of.
Something in addition to, we already have heard this, this happened with well number four last time. What are, what are you asking for approval for?
The actual pump is there. So we got a quote to clean the pump, but when we pulled it, there's some air items that were just very bitter out.
Okay.
The casing was pitted. Though like Jeff said, it's not as bad as well, six, and it's full of that.
So it's a pump refu, pump repair on well four, for what dollar amount?
Fifty-three oh five.
I thought that's what you just.
Fifty-three oh five.
So that had nothing to do with the.
He thought that was the bill, but it was the quote.
Okay.
This is the quote on the repair. Now, there, there's a separate bill that will be coming for the inspection and cleaning.
And that was what you guys approved.
Yeah. This is the, this is the quote for the repair on what they found for their inspection.
Yes.
So Park made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Randy?
What is it? I mean, this is not what our budget was for a year of that.
Water tower inspection, did I mention this last time?
You told me.
This is our budget column, right?
Could remember if I, we'll have something back done later on, but to get always clues about that. Sewer rehab project, we still have to work at the wastewater treatment plant to do.
Yeah, the bond.
They also, I think, maybe have one or two segments for the C I P, and then that portion should be done, and then they'll need to come in and square off and pay some of the holes that we've got, and that'll pretty much wrap it up with the sewer project, so that's coming to completion.
You talked to Oakley, Randy?
Yes.
What'd you say about the water tower?
I mentioned last time, and I couldn't remember if I did it off, but the preliminary inspection on the water tower showed the tank was good for probably another five or six years. The only thing that you recommend is the inside of the tanks could probably benefit from a mix sewer, and the reason for that is you get a bunch of stuff on top that grows, and
Right.
You have a mixture, keeps the temperature, the regular dentable, so you can get all that.
So, well, back to, I mean, it's a very interesting proposal. Do we still want to pursue getting involved in them? Because we know we're going to have water tower issues at some point. I mean, it's sort of like setting up a savings account.
That's, I think that makes sense.
I thought it was very, very interesting idea, and something we should consider. So is he going to come?
He's, he's going to come, gets everything put together, gets the other scrunches for us, but that, that's just my quick conversation with him on the phone, and he's saying, you know, they're structurally very great shape.
What's that?
And, and the paint's not major failing at the time.
Speaking of paint failing, where are we at? Excuse me, on our light poles on forty-one?
We're actually going to have a guy take a look at those four, of course. Roger hooked us up with a fellow who's going to do a test on them and see just what kind of structure actually lies on either of us, because I'm afraid that if we get to doing a lot of scraping or anything on those, we're going to really degrade the structural integrity of some of those poles, so rather than do that, we want to make sure what we're working with first.
I'd like his contact list.
Yeah, it's pretty long, I think.
You got anything else?
That's it for me.
All right.
Just a side note, speaking of the Oakley project, we are, we have not received any funding yet from the state, so I talked to Cindy Todd earlier this evening before I came, and we kind of, we really probably need to go ahead and pay the last invoice for Graves, because they are ready to submit another invoice, and she said it would be fine to go ahead and pay it out of the money we have, and then when the money comes in from the state, move it back into that line, because we are getting outside, we will be getting outside this limitation, so I'm going to print off the documentation from the other, the state, as well as documentation from emails back and forth with Graves about getting that bill paid.
That's a sewer project.
We don't want to get outside our contracted a lot, just because we're having to hold up with state funding, so I'll probably go ahead and kind of check for that tomorrow to Graves.
Speaking of sewer project, I don't know if the rest of the board has any interest. It'd be nice to just kind of take time at some meeting in the near future, go over what all they did, you know. I have lost track. I mean, I, I saw a lot of spots. I knew, I expected, seeing that, I saw this possible. I didn't know they were doing that. I know we did a lot of cure and place there. I saw they actually went into the valley there between Virginia and Eastwood, back up in there a month, a few months back, and dug something up.
Yeah, I think that was a spot replacement.
Yeah, it'd be kind of nice to review it, just to see what the heck we've got fixed. We did a lot. I saw now forty, or thirty-six last week.
Out there by Ben.
Ben. Was that a cure and place or?
Cleveland Televised Cure Place, and I tell you what, the Cure Place, the more I hear about that, the more I understand it. Man, that's going to expand the lifespan of some of those, like tiles, chromatic.
Yeah.
So I, I think that was about a ghost span.
Now, they fixed the issue on, is it woodland that had the, the, was it the vector? Somebody put utility through our sewer?
Oh, yeah, it was vector, I think.
That's been a while back, haven't it?
I don't know. Anyway, I.
Is it vector or joint?
We don't know. I don't think.
How long reviews have been?
I thought it was on this list, repairs, but they didn't know. I, I can't take that. But it'd be nice to review it, just as, I'm going to take a little time to go over it, but it'd be good.
That big old roll paper up there, that's it.
There you go.
So we can sort of buy that now. Here, yeah, I'll, I'll bring you the map, because I've got all the segments highlighted.
Okay.
All right, Randy?
It's easier, it's more reflective when you hitchhike them.
That's a neon penis you weren't.
Yes, yes. Here's all some of the activity sheets for August. The Rockville Police Department, which is sitting under the grant from Indiana Criminal Justice Institute for Traffic Safety Enforcement Grant for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, which ends, or starts at the beginning of, or the end of September, I guess, and runs through next year. We got a thirty-six hundred dollar grant from them last year for overtime for traffic enforcement. This year it's going up to forty-one ten, and I'd asked for ten thousand, so next year I think I'll ask for fifty, and maybe we'll get up a little bit. Property inspections, we had two new ones and one amendment that we're adding, another property you only buy the same person to. The yard sale in the square was quite busy that Saturday.
Don't tell me there were more than twenty fifty people.
I don't know. I didn't count them.
There you.
Two hundred forty-nine.
Yeah, that's my count.
Yeah, but I had to close, stop out traffic on Jefferson, because a lot of the vendors along that route had parked out in the street and had it down to one lane, so it was just easy to corner it off and not allow anybody drives out during that period. I'll be taking vacation October ninth to the nineteenth, since we're not having a brief festival, so I'm getting out of town.
Lucky duck.
Yeah.
I'm on call.
I got a local business owner that approached me this morning. He's going to make a five hundred dollar donation to the police department for use in our children's programs, so that money can be put back into the general fund to replace money that we've already used on kids' programs this year. Gun permits have been on the rise this year, just to let you know that. We've had a lot of people coming in, getting gun permits, but they also enacted a five-year gun permit, which is free. Well, it's free through the town. They still have to pay for the fingerprints, and they still have to pay the state police online to apply for it, but it's free on our behalf.
That was a nice one.
That was a nice one. Randy Cleaver delivered the two new computers about three weeks ago, but he hasn't been back to install them yet. I think he's just a little overbooked.
Hunt him down on Thursday. Yeah, we've been keeping him busy.
Right. So I haven't got a bill yet because he hadn't installed it, but I think we were talking about moving that to the COVID funding, right? Okay. Police Commission did meet last month in an executive session to discuss personnel, but we meet again soon in a regular meeting to go over some use of force reports and other business. When we left, we left all the minutes from the previous meetings on your desk. I want to make sure you got those.
I did, thank you.
Okay. Request, got a request to make no parking on the west side of the elementary school playground, which is, would be the east side of college, just along the school property only.
Thank you.
During the school hours. We just took out a tree there by organs and stuff, but we've had some instances of people parking out there while kids are at.
There are a couple of them that park there every single day, and it's growing. It used to be just one, and now it's like two or three, and they park, and they don't want to wait in the line, so they park there and have the kids walk around.
Oh.
We're having that also, but if we could post that, if we get an ordinance to make that no parking during school hours Monday through Friday.
What times do you want, then?
Probably seven-thirty to.
Nine?
Four-thirty.
Oh, which from, yeah.
School parks, something.
No, that's just their other.
Because we've had some people sitting out there parking when the kids are at recess.
That's losing, no, break us down to Joe Hartman.
Kind of creepy. I mean, you don't know who they're out there, but people also aren't allowed to be on school property any, I mean, they're, they're not allowed to be in school like they were before because of COVID, so some people, we've had some instances of non-custodial parents being out there, and so it's just a mess, so if we just don't have them parking there at all, it should help to alleviate that problem.
Did you ever find the person that was doing forty-seven on the, in the twenty mile an hour zone?
Not yet.
Oh, probably the person I passed on the way here.
You passed? So you were getting a little bump for it?
No, I passed somebody coming at me, that they were doing a lot more than thirty, thirty-five even.
No, but I pulled up out front here to come to the meeting, and I don't think any of you were here yet, but some guy pulled up, started yelling at me about motorcycles, passing him a hundred mile an hour coming into town.
I'm telling you.
So I was out looking for them.
What's the deal? Are the golf carts and buggies supposed to be on the sidewalk?
No.
Well, they are.
Golf carts are not allowed on sidewalks. Buggy, side-by-sides are not allowed on sidewalks. They're allowed on the town streets, the same as the county roads. They're allowed to cross state highways, but they're not allowed to drive along the state highways. The golf carts are the same thing. They should, they can cross it, so you've got some residents that have cut, say, for instance, Redwood Drive, just north of the Forest Motel. They'll cut across and cut through the licensed branch or something. That's technically not against the law.
There's one in particular that drives on sidewalks all the time. I can tell you who.
Okay. Let me know later, and I'll address that issue. Yeah, we do have. Some people do that. The ATVs and UTVs are allowed on the town streets as long as they're registered, driven by a licensed driver who's at least eighteen years of age. They've had proof of insurance. Well, if they're under eighteen, they got to have a helmet, but they got to be eighteen to operate them under Indiana law, so.
Isn't, that's on golf carts, too.
And anybody under eighteen has to have a helmet. It's not on golf carts.
It's not on golf carts. Okay, so it's the ATVs, right?
Yes, because of the rate of speed that they could go and that kind of thing. Any questions?
No.
We had a four day coming up, and we were tracking down some, some property people and some, oh, I did have something else. You guys were asking about locations of stuff before. We carry in our computers a Think Map. It's, it's a G I S mapping. But I would suggest that you get one for the, for the town office, one for Jeff, for the utilities. You were talking about getting utilities GIS mapping on them. This ThinkMap has that capability for that. And you can just send those layers to that company and they'll upload them to the map. They always update them. Every week I can download updates to that. But it's got emergency addresses. In an emergency, it'd help emergency responders to find different utilities and stuff. We do have gas lines marked on there and water lines, but I don't think we have any Rockville utilities on there. So you guys have talked about that before, but this company, this company already is something we have most on, addresses and parcels. When you were talking about the school, behind the school football field, I clicked on that. And it shows that ditch is the school's property. In fact, the woods all the way over is the school's property. But that would be easy for the town's attorney to have access to it.
Did anybody ever take a look at that along, do you don't know, Stark?
Yes, Stark, I know what you're talking. Dean Swainville was.
Yeah.
We've been taking care of it by neighboring.
Well, it just mowed along the sidewalks. They have not gotten the hillside done yet and I haven't gotten to talk to them yet.
It's gonna happen. It's gonna take a bush hog now.
And it probably, well, it would have taken that when you reported it, too.
Well, yeah.
It, it's been overgrown all year and.
For the last three or four.
So Randy, to answer you quick, when was your?
Part of that will be the town's property, too, if you're talking about from the center of the road. What's our, what's our roadway and right away from the center of the road in that location? So part of that going over the guardrail down the hill is gonna be the town's.
Cut it all down.
I think we'd let the joint property undertake it.
Well, but can you force him to make that cut on that hillside?
No.
East of the school, that's what I'm saying.
Ken and Gene used to take the push mower on a rope and it went down the hill and that thing was as clean as a whistle.
Yeah, but he could have it declared as a natural forest, too. It's got all them trees growing at that.
It's also got a lot of critters and trash.
So we probably can't force them to cut the trees, but we could force them to move the grass possibly.
There are any.
No, I don't mind at all.
There are weeds. There are.
We have a trash.
We have a cat explosion.
We have 17 court dates on October 21st for town stuff between debt collection and ordinances. When's your vacation over?
The 19th. I'll be back then. I think the 19th's my first day back.
I'll, I'll share this list with you.
Okay.
But they're all at 1:30 that day.
And some of those, you were having me serve with those to appear, but I just gave you one back. We could, he's moved again.
And he was set that day. So that'd bring it down to 16 unless we find a new address. But, so we'll be pretty busy that day.
Did we give you an update on that one, the last one? You still have it?
I would tell you, Nick's had us in the forest a lot more than I've ever spent.
I'll figure that's what we found.
Yeah, that definitely.
But I don't, I don't know if that's, yeah.
That's the one, you gave us that one, we tried to use it, but, so the search continues. But yeah, it's gonna be a busy day. I'll send you a screenshot so you have the list.
Okay. Anything else you can think of? Have you guys addressed that? With the state highway about 41 that.
Creek this one?
Yeah.
Storm drain over there, but crowning over there?
Yeah.
We took, uh, the engineer, Pete Patsky, when he was over here, we were looking at the paving projects, and we pointed out some areas of concern and that was one of them.
And I, I think we got you all the accident reports for the, for the poles that were hit. There was one in front of Dr. Waltz's office and one across the street a little bit north.
That's Bart's. That's Bart's.
Did we have anything else that you were needing?
That wouldn't be north of Waltz.
Didn't have anything out of the well field.
The only other one was out on Strawberry Road, but it was our, our pole, but we've already gotten reimbursement for it, too.
Did we have somebody hit a utility pole maybe out towards the, did we get that one? Yeah, drunk driver hit the pole out towards the well field. Did you get that? That was six months ago or so. So I want to make sure we got that. The county worked the accident, arrested the driver for driving autotocated.
The only one I can think of is out Strawberry Road.
No, this one was out the bottom of Red Bud Hill area.
I do not have anything on that.
But it was a town's pole and it cuts, it cuts the utilities to the town. It's a well field.
I didn't get anything for that one.
Okay, I'll see what I can find. I'll get it for you.
That's the rest, that's the rest. Did you get a case number or anything?
Yeah, I can get all that. I can get the actual report for you and everything.
And make weekend, go ahead.
File the insurance claim. Cause I, I think that did cost us.
That was Red Bud?
Yeah, it was bottom of Red Bud Hill.
You mentioned pole replacement costs. Are you, do you get material and trash time and?
Hours, yeah, they're supposed to put all that in there.
And fringe benefit costs and.
Yeah, Brett usually puts all that together for me and will bring it to me if he's got the information, but I.
We file it with the insurance company.
We haven't, I haven't received anything in here from anybody on it. So if that's something the sheriff department works.
And that's another thing, is if, if after you get that and you file it, the insurance company doesn't pay for it, kick it back to them, you know, make sure we get it to the prosecutor.
Right.
And that's a condition of their.
Because I think one of the.
Criminal sentences that they pay restitution.
One of the funds that I'm receiving now is restitution on one of those poles, so, yeah.
But sometimes that goes, it'll be a while before you'll get some and, and I'll get a, we'll get a check and it's from some case, I don't know how long it'll be.
Right, it takes a while.
Yeah. The wheels of justice turn.
Slowly. When they turn it all.
Restitution.
Systems over.
Sometimes the wheels are square.
Alright, anybody have anything to add?
I didn't hear Jess say something about that.
Oh, cats. Can we do anything about that?
We don't have any order to talk to.
Well, you don't have, and state law doesn't, doesn't really allow you to address cats. It's ownership. They're, they can roam free.
That's bizarre.
But Indiana law does state that you have the right to destroy an animal that is threatening you or someone else or destroying your property.
Well, they're, they're more prone to carry disease than dogs are, I believe.
If they were bigger, they would eat you.
Well, they probably would.
And the feral cats, if that's what they are, we have tracked some of those. And the humane shelter says, bring them over, we will spay and neuter them for you. And then you gotta come back and get them and bring them back and set them free.
Well, they might escape on the way back.
And all lose some money.
What food facility, state law has nothing.
I love to take care of the world.
Well, I do, but it is.
Well, yeah, don't tell me what it is and then I'm gonna kill you. Only other thing I know is Catholic Charities is going to be doing a distribution. I believe it's either, I think it's September 23rd, but it might be the 22nd, but they're gonna be doing it out of the fairgrounds. Those who are facing food insecurity, they will give you 50 pounds of food, including meats and other food products.
Well, for some reason, the food pantries have had an excess amount of food and have to try to get, get wherever food was bad.
What's up with the old place across there from Napa? That, that's been lagging about cleaning up forever.
Yeah, I've been there a couple of times cleaning. It's still working on it.
Oh.
Yeah.
Recycle there.
The town, when they're changing it out, they'll take that material, this lane back there, sell it, donate it to the food bank and bill them cost plus to get the place cleaned up, which has been going on for months.
And can we do that, Nick, without?
We gotta go through the.
We gotta go through sources.
And they've been cited, but they're in the period where they're, or they threw their 30 days.
They're through that.
So we can go.
They've gone through that already.
So we can go forward with court proceedings if the judge authorizes it. We can go in there and do that.
And they had a great big roll up dump that brought in there, but they had so much stuff back there that.
It is.
Both of them were aluminum cans, but.
What I think you'll find is once they receive court proceeding notice, you'll see a middle one.
They're probably waiting for the price of metal to go in.
But.
I'm sure. That's exactly what it is.
Can you send me whatever you got on it, Randy?
Alright, if nobody has anything else, is there any public comment? And if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?